The time is now approaching one o'clock. We're recording. We are getting ready to call our meeting to order. Let us stand for the invocation and the pledge allegiance. Gracious Creator, we thank you for this precious day. We thank you for another opportunity to serve. We ask that you come into this meeting to have your way. So you are the only one who knows all and sees all and know what's best for all of us. So we remove our personal selves out of the way and give permission for you to come in to lead the people of this city on the path that will be most prosperous for all mentally, physically, spiritually, and in our health. You're welcome into this meeting today to have your way. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our first item on our agenda is approval of the minutes from September 11, 2023. We have a motion in the second, any discussion, hearing none, all those who pay for signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed like aye. At this time, we will have appearances before our council, and we're asking that each representative who come forth, please contain your presentation to five minutes, and that's according to our codes for the City of Orange session number two dash twenty-four eight. At this time, we can call forth, we have Reverend Hemingway to make a presentation to the city regarding the PD Youth Day event. Reverend Hemingway, please come forward, please.
I'm gonna stand briefly and then I'm gonna sit back down. Thank you.
Greetings to the City of Florence, City Council, and Mayor. We just wanna say thank you, and I ask for, uh, we apologize for being late, and I apologize for us being late in presenting this award. The PD Youth Day was July the eighth, and we had a enormous group of people, youth and adults that came out. We presented awards, presented different speakers, all the way from Columbia, Greenville, um, and from our lower country. So we thank you for allowing us to be able to help the youth of the PD area, the PD region. Uh, we pray your indulgence to allow us to continue this each year, and we want to present an award to you just to show our appreciation, something that you will have, uh, put in the city, all where we desire to put the place, to let you know that we thank you for the resolution, we thank you for allowing us to work for the youth and to work with the City of Florence. This is from PD Youth Day Initiative Officers, Members, and Board of the Righteous.
Wow. That's my trophy.
And the City of Florence, uh, Mayor, Mayor Irving is our board of directors chair. The Mayor of Lake City, Mayor Robinson is our co-chair. We ask that he have any remarks?
Before I even take my seat, why do you want to acknowledge that when we need to talk to me by Reverend Hemingway, and it's actually about 2021, three, four, and we were sitting there, and we were talking about doing a Florence, um, Youth Day, but in the conversation, might say, well, you know, could we do a PD Youth Day? So that would have served the whole of the PD, and from that, the PD Youth Day was born. And I do want to acknowledge, I'm asking each one of the board members to acknowledge themselves, or do you want to state that when I reached out to Mayor Robinson, it was the hardest, and we asked him to never any questions, she was willing and ready to work with us, and more important, she, her daughters actually came and back to us. So I just want to acknowledge the fear, say that she's always willing to work, make things better, but thank you for having that support. Actually, three of the daughters, the oldest one, actually, she's gonna be our ambassador. She's just, oh, stars, right? She actually is an Army National Guard, she's in basic training right now for the next year, so. So we have some young, young, young people who is ex-classes, and then girls enjoy this, and from that also, we got some other young people who have wanted to be a part. I do want to acknowledge that Councilwoman, Ms. Jackson, her son is an honor student, and he came out so excited for what he saw, that he also volunteered to become an youth ambassador, because what we do want to do is get the young people involved to lead the way, tell us what the young people of the PD need to make things better for them, and that's the purpose. And at this time, I'm gonna ask that the board, if you're here, please take this place here and talk to us.
Um, my name is Kent, and I am a resident of the Department of Law Enforcement and Special Agent and Legalation. Um, my main objective is to break the community of bridge in the gap between law enforcement and the community, and, um, partnering with different initiatives, organizations, such as this bridge debt gap, and to work together to show that law enforcement is indeed on board with the community.
I'm Reverend Lisa Spears, daily pastor, and also director of Pay Center for Girls, a school-based program that provides counseling services just for girls. We are in two schools here, Florence, and we are excited about the work that we are doing to empower girls, and also a part of the mayor's youth initiative, and really excited to be able to contribute to breaking. And my son, who is a senior at Coastal Carolina University, serves as an ambassador.
Sure, um, once, like they said, I am Mayor Robinson from the great city of Lake City, and I was very honored when Mayor Teresa called me and Reverend Hemingway contacted me to be a part of this board, the PD Day Youth Initiative, and getting our young people involved is what we want to do, and want to give them the opportunity to put their input in what they would like to see, not only in Florence, not only in Lake City, but the whole community. So the first PD Youth Day was a very success. We had so many come out, so many attendees, so many participants, vendors, and just collaborating, having that collaboration, um, it really brought that day to success. So I can't wait, and I know that we all can't wait for next year.
My name is Bishop William Davis. Um, I live in Florence, uh, PD area. I grew up in Maryland County, and Reverend Hemingway, getting hip about this, I think, I mean, what did I do to empower our leadership, our young people? One of my mottoes growing up is, uh, it doesn't start in your pocket, it starts in your mind. So anything we want to do, I think we just need to change the narrative. I'm actually working on some things with Reverend Hemingway, uh, for our church, I'm a pastor, I'm a citizen church, one thing we try to do is try to be active as much as possible without you. Uh, there's a lot of destructive, uh, a lot of criticism, and they just need help. Uh, they just need a voice that's gonna speak to them. That's right.
Once again, to the boards and also to the members who are not here, thank you for all that you do, and please long look out for the PD Youth Day Initiative, there are various organizations already involved, and we're excited, because we, I'll give this thing to you, thanks, for what you cost, says how many people you made, as well, if we have one person come that day, and we can help them, we'll be successful. But the turnout was so great that day, we stopped registering here and started with our families, because we had young people, families outside of the door before ten o'clock AM, and we owe that ten. So to this board, and especially to Reverend Hemingway, thank you, and thank you for having that mission, thank you for coming to Florence, and asking Florence to be a part of this. To all the board members, thank you for your faithful service, we appreciate it.
And once again, thank you for all the participants, and thank you for everyone who came out on the Youth Day, and also the sponsors who sponsored that day. And I always say it was great this year, and we believe it'll be even better next year. Thank you. As we proceed with our agenda, we are having next Mr. Scott Gardner to speak to the council regarding the fentanyl awareness. Mr. Gardner?
Hi, my name's Scott Gardner, and, uh, I'm here to talk about fentanyl and how it's affected me and my, my family, um, and also to talk to you about an organization that we're coming, we're found, finding, calling, uh, the American Fentanyl Association. I'm a single parent of three, I have been for over twenty years. My oldest is twenty-nine, lives here in Florence. My chief, her name's Amber, Taylor is twenty-seven, lives at the beach, and my son, if he was alive today, would be twenty-one. Um, I've heard of fentanyl. I've heard of fentanyl in San Francisco, I've heard of it in New York, Atlanta, where I'm from. I've heard it all over, but I never, ever, ever, in my wildest imagination, could I have thought that it would enter my household. Uh, I'm not a household of alcoholics and drug addicts, uh, fortunately. Um, we're a very close, very close family. Fentanyl destroys, destroys so bad, and I just, I need to share this, because it's just something that happens so often. July eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two was just a normal day, it was Monday, it was sunny, and there was a knock on the door. I got up, answered the door, and there was Dee, Tanner's girlfriend of three years, and they had a, a future together, they had planned. Mr. Garner, I hate to bother you, Tanner's not answering his phone, his work's calling, he must have overslept. I run upstairs and wake the knucklehead up, is what I said, you know? She runs up there within seconds, I'm still standing at the bottom of the stairs with my phone, and I hear, "Call nine-one-one, call nine-one-one, oh God, call nine-one-one." I shoot up there, calling nine-one-one, I go into my son's room, which is dark, and to, there's a bathroom that goes into another bedroom, and I look down, Dee's on her hands and knees crying, "Tanner, wake up, Tanner, wake up." And I look over with nine-one-one on the phone, and there's my son in the fetal position, naked, stiff, lips purple, and I knew instantly my son was dead. I, I can't just begin to describe how that makes a parent or anybody feel. I, I, at sixteen, I saw my dad die, uh, playing water volleyball by our swimming pool, and it killed me for years, but this took it to a whole, whole different level. Chaos erupt. You got the EMT coming, you got police coming, detectives are coming, I'm told it's a crime scene, they ushered me downstairs, I'm, it's like I'm in a bubble, nightmare, I can't believe this has happened, and all I can keep saying is, "God, no, my son, my son, my son, no, not my son." And then I realized I had to call Amber. Amber's the closest thing that Tanner ever had as a mother, he did not know his mother, and I had to call her, she was minutes away where she worked, um, and I, she comes running in, just a mess, a mess. Taylor comes from the beach, and it just, for you, I can't tell you, that's over a year ago, and PTS, anxiety, depression, sleep disorder, and then I made the stupid decision to start drinking, because I was so hurt, so distraught, and that made it worse. It's by the grace of God that I'm standing here today, and I, I don't drink, that was just a temporary vice, that almost killed me and would have killed my daughters, can you imagine? But that's the effect that, uh, that fentanyl has, it doesn't just stop with your loved ones' death, alright? My son wasn't an alcoholic, wasn't a drug addict, he had a hurt back, he took half a fentanyl, half a pill that he thought was a muscle relaxer, half, half killed him. Today, two, over two hundred people will be having a story like that, similar, over two hundred a day die from fentanyl. Most of them are accidental overdoses, like my son. For instance, fourteen-year-old in Irvine, California, gets on Snapchat, it's so easy to get for these kids now, gets a drug dealer to deliver it to his house while his parents are in the next room asleep, next morning, they wake him up to go to school, he doesn't wake up, he's dead. And there's a million stories like that. Thirty-five percent increase from two thousand nineteen to two thousand and twenty. Now, keep in mind, we're around two hundred a year, that number's approaching three hundred, it's probably over three hundred if we had updated information. It's not going away. Uh, it's noted by as the deadliest drug epidemic that this country has ever seen, not second, not third, it's number one, alright? We, uh, it's a hundred times more potent than, uh, morphine, two milligrams, which equivalent to ten amount, ten grams of salt, is lethal, can kill you, just like that. It's powdery substance, it's cheap, it's easily you get in the country, alright? They've got it now, rainbow colors, alright? They're attacking our kids on a social media, getting it so they can get it over the social media, Snapchat doesn't matter, they can get it just like that, anybody can, alright? And they'll deliver it to you. This is a staggering one now, this is what we need to be really aware of, a hundred and eighty-two percent increase in children ten years of age to nineteen. This is what people do, and this is great, I'm not bashing this, this is great, anything, any action we take is better than nothing. But what we're doing, the, you know, the, we're going to Washington, and they're coming up with new laws, you know, a drug dealer will spend more time, they're going after cartels to get their money, and all that's great, I'm not, you know, fitness awareness. My son died of fentanyl, uh, I, I didn't even know there was fentanyl awareness, alright? So that's how, you know, we're failing, we're failing, because think about this, the cartel is half, they're worth five hundred billion, some people say over a trillion dollars, they got over two hundred thousand employees, there's no way to document that, they know it's higher, alright? Drug dealers, you increase that from eight years to twelve years, do you think they really care? I mean, they don't think like we think, alright? So, there's the border, the border is just, it's another barrier right there, eighty-five percent of fentanyl comes through the border, China, Venezuela, Mexico, there's all sorts of avenues that's coming. So I've got a vision, American Fentanyl Association, gonna be formed here out of Florence, South Carolina, and I got a question for you, because I'm thinking big on this, alright? If I wave this out in front of everybody, a hundred percent of you know what's it, this represents, don't you? It was formed by a woman out of Atlanta who wanted people to be made aware. They wanted the people to be aware, and have they done that? Absolutely, it's staggering numbers, staggering. I mean, it has been an unbelievable success story. So my, my question is, this is our logo, alright? It's the angel of hope, protection, okay? Coming and fighting, fighting on the, on the ground level is what we gotta do. When somebody attacks you, do you just sit back? We're being attacked, alright? This is the biggest epidemic we've ever seen, drug-related. We gotta take this to the ground, full court press, alright? Boots-on-the-ground mentality in front of schools, any organizations where there's people, young families, kids, the organization that was just up here, we need to be in front of them. Anywhere there's, there's power in numbers, we gotta educate our youth, our young families of the dangers of this absolute epidemic that is destroying and crippling this, this, or this whole country, and it's getting worse every day. So, we're, that's what I'm gonna do, and I'm asking for support, I, I, you know, I, I came here not really knowing what was gonna happen, okay? I just was gonna throw this out there, one way or another, I, I'm that guy, uh, you just met that guy that gets up at four-thirty in the morning, works out for three hours at sixty years old, goes to work for eight hours, and then runs, and then deals with their family, and I don't sleep, alright? I, I just, this right here is not going away, alright? I'm gonna get support somewhere, some way, and, and we're gonna kick it off, alright? With a, I'm gonna get on a bicycle, alright? And I'm gonna ride from Florence, South Carolina, I hope, City Hall or here, it does not matter, someplace, and I'm gonna go off to the border, it's gonna be documented, it's gonna be all over social media. A guy from Florence, South Carolina, whose son died, is gonna start an organization, and we're gonna tailor it off of the, a successful, successful organization, and we're gonna put Florence on the map, okay? Because nobody's doing this, we're doing a different, whole different, and it's, once again, it's great they're doing that, but this is what, this is my vision, and it's a vision God's put on my heart, this is not Scott Garner, okay? I'd rather be in a fetal position in the corner, feeling sorry for myself, but I'm done doing that, okay? That's all I got, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gardner, and also, I'm sorry to hear of the loss of your son by Carina, I'm a nurse, so, and I know that this is an epidemic, and I will encourage you as well, um, with the organization that you've just saw standing before us, um, the board is there, so you're welcome to speak with them as well, too. And I'm sorry for your loss, truly, and when what you're getting ready to do, I hope and pray that this will be something powerful, because I believe that everything starts with a passion, and I can see that passion that's within you, and I do believe as you're doing this, your son's death won't be in vain. Chair recognizes for him.
Scott Gardner, thank you so much for coming here and being with us, uh, and also, we had gotten an email where the video that you did was forwarded to us, and I just want you to know that I watched the video, and it was very powerful, and, um, it complemented your presentation today, so, anything that we can do, anything I can personally do to, to be of assistance, please let me know.
Okay, I will, I will be reaching out, I mean, we've got, I've got plans, this is, this is something that I'm passionate about, it's not going away.
God bless you.
Mr. Gardner, please don't leave, um, the three councilmen, councilwoman Barnes, and councilman Raddick, and councilwoman Neese Smith-Oles want to address you in that order, please.
Thank you so much, I, I just wanna understand, you said support, support in what form? Well, I would think initially, the first thing would be maybe to form a committee, uh, to have a roundtable type conversation, come up with how we're gonna, uh, kick this off, and the bike ride's gonna take place, I'm gonna do that, and I'm gonna get sponsors. Uh, but I, I, just how we can do this, through media, we need, we need recognition, that, that's how this will be successful, one person can't make this happen. It's gotta be surrounded, now, I've ran a company for thirty years, I would never have been successful unless I had, didn't have good people around me, so I'm just hoping that somehow this will make a connection where we could get a group of people around a table and kick around some ideas on how we can make this a successful launch.
Councilman Raddick?
Unfortunately, your story is one that I've heard hundreds of times in the last fifteen years that I've been working with people struggling with addiction, and, and myself included, so, uh, if you could leave your contact information, too much to discuss, but I'll, I'll help you in any way I can, just leave me a number in the email and I'll, I'll get to it.
Uh, thank you so much, um, Mr. Gardner, for your passion, your activism, and just the fact that you want to start this awareness. Um, I was sitting here thinking of how I could support you, um, and by being the chair of the public relations and marketing, I think that we can, um, you know, kind of starting awareness within our city of how this affects so many of our citizens and, and the impact that it does have. Um, so I would like to get with you, because like I said, we are doing some awareness campaigns, and this can definitely kick it off, and any other way that I can, uh, support you, you do have my support.
That's our answer, right there. And we're thinking five Ks and stuff like that, that's all on the way up here, five K for us, that's great, that's the type of stuff we gotta do, draw this company, this , uh, community together for a cause, whatever the cause is, great things will happen.
Thank you, Mr. Gardner.
Thank you.
At this time, appearing before council will be Mr. Derek Runyon to speak to the council regarding water rates.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
Good to be back. My name is Deborah Runyon, and I still have some, some concerns about these water rates that are, um, now in effect. So, uh, I did come in August, and at that time, the proposal was, uh, five percent across city and county council, and then with the increasing percentages for the next five years. And then you voted to change that and reduce the, um, percentage for the city residents to four percent, and increase the percentages for county, which was interesting, because I moved from the city to the county, and so now my water rates are more after speaking to you. So, uh, I'm here on behalf of more than just me, but many citizens, I'm, I have encountered many people that are very concerned about the rates going up, and that there now is that conflict between the city and the county rates, and that puts a burden, um, on everybody, really, but more so on the county than the city. Um, I do think it's an unfair increase, and, um, the city does receive more, um, services than the county, because you do include pickup in your services, uh, for the city, but not for the county. Uh, I was looking up and I talked to the city today, the difference between, the, there are four rates, there's the water base rate, the water usage rate, the sewer base rate, and the sewer usage rate, all of those fees have been increased. Um, so according to that, there is a discrepancy between the city base rate of forty-nine dollars and eighteen cents, the county base rate of all of those are seventy-five dollars and seventy cents. So you have a fifty percent increase over that fifty, uh, dollars going into that seventy-five dollar, uh, rate, uh, which would be twenty-six dollars and fifty-two cents difference between the city resident and the county resident. Rounding up, I know that that, I'm not sure that's on the boat for today, I wasn't sure exactly when that was coming up, but I know that it, on my water bill, and, and in the paper, it's been indicated that it isn't automatically included in your bill, and you have to opt out of it. Um, so that's another layer of generating funds, not only the fee increases percentage-wise over the next five years, but also the, uh, the rounding up. So my question about that is, when you, if you were to go and want to, um, see about that, the personal information that you have to provide, uh, includes your social security number, your tax forms, you have to prove of need, that's a lot of invasion, and those of us who really don't want that assistance, we want to be able to take care of ourselves, I mean, I was raised without government handouts, and it, it would crush me to have to take a handout, I mean, crush me. And so I have always been able to provide for myself and my family as a single parent of three, and, um, so it makes me sad, uh, because I've always wanted to and been able to support the local businesses, but with less income available to do that, um, because of inflation and taxes. So, um, another question about that would be, does it continue, or do you have to do it every single time? Because there are people that have come to me and say, "Well, I can get assistance." Well, is it, you know, how's it based? Is, uh, and then you've got that layer two of the people that, the nonprofit, they have to make decisions, so they're getting paid, I mean, it just seems like multiple layers here that is unnecessary when you could just cut the increase, the bottom line, and then it's available for everybody. So another thing that was mentioned last time I was here, I have four points, by the way, this is point number three. Um, Florence rates in comparison to surrounding towns, that was brought up. So in regard to that, that was brought up, so, in regard to that, there is a Office of Local Government with Municipal Water and Sewer Rate Survey on this for every city in South Carolina, every water department in South Carolina, in regard to that, Lake City is less, Hemingway is less, Marion is less, Mullins, Dillon, Coward, Pamlico, Hartsville, and King Street, all of those surrounding communities are less on their water rate than Florence, the only one that's higher is Scranton, and if I were to investigate that a little bit more, I bet that's because of the Nanyaw plant there, just drawing lots of water out of the aquifer, out of the Lake City area, and the reason I can say that is because my husband, who was from Lake City, his well went dry after Nanyaw came, so, and my fourth point is about infrastructure money. Money has been available and coming into Florence according to WBTW, and also WhiteHouse.gov. South Carolina has forty-six counties, and those forty-six counties received eighty-nine million dollars, which was distributed on February, in February of 2023, if we were to take those forty-six counties and divide that into eighty-nine million dollars, if equal distribution, and I don't know how they're distributing it, I couldn't find that, I looked, one point nine million dollars would be coming to Florence County for specifically water infrastructure, and April, this was a quote from WBTW, "The city of Florence received nine point nine million dollars from the American Rescue Plan Act funds to upgrade the water infrastructure in the city." Now, I know ten million dollars plus two million dollars is twelve million dollars, and your budget is four hundred and fifty million dollars, but also, the first twenty million of that thirty-five million bond, if I remember correctly, is to be used for the electric vehicle battery plant, to be able to put water there and the substation, et cetera. So, in review, and I appreciate this time, by the way, number one, with the rates, I would, I wish that you would revisit and reduce the tax increase structure for the city and county water recipients, the water residents. Two, I would like for you to vote no on the roundup on the water bill. Three, the comparison with other towns indicate Florence is on the high end, at what cost do we solicit foreign country companies? This company that has come in, this electric vehicle battery company, is not an American company, and it is bringing its own employees from Germany, just like Nanyaw brought all their employees from their country, so, at what cost do we solicit these companies to use our resources for us to pay for them to use them? And the last thing is the accountability of funds, so, there is a comprehensive annual financial report that is listed on the website for city of Florence, South Carolina, I went back to two thousand nine, I could find two thousand nine comprehensive annual financial report, two thousand ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, all the way up to two thousand twenty, but I was unable to find twenty-one, or twenty-two, or twenty-three, actually, if you go to June, twenty-three, so I don't know where that information is, I guess I, I would have thought it would have been online for everybody to see, maybe, but I could find, since I could find so many other reports, I don't know where those reports are, so my fourth request is that we have accountability of those funds and make those reports available, because it's our money, it's your money, of Florence County and the city, and I have found that I can only spend my money once, and so I want to be very proactive and accountable with my money, but with anybody else's money that I am in charge of, and that's a big responsibility to, that you have, to be responsible for our money, so thank you very much, and I, if I may, Mr. Garner, I am so sorry about your son, you are a fine man, and I can see where he was fine in himself, and the contributions that he could have made to society, I am very sorry. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Runyon. Appreciate it.
Do you want to ask me any questions? You might want to ask me a question.
But no, none of the council has desired you to do so, but.
It was so clear.
I've got lots of information.
Well, we, we do thank you for your appearance, and then for the city of Florence, you're welcome, go to thecityofflorence.com, to our city of Florence, and you can see our, our budget reports on our site for the city, not for the county, but you're welcome as well, information.
Well, I'm gonna try again.
Yes, ma'am.
I could not find it, I make them appear and have some assistance with us.
All right, well, thank you so much for your, your input, and also all your thoughts that you gave us today, we truly appreciate it. At this time, we move forward with our agenda, and first we have under ordinance in position is bill number twenty twenty-three dash thirty-two, it's a second reading, it's an ordinance to rename West Kansas Road and name an unnamed road as identified in Florence County Tax Map Number nine zero zero nine three dash zero one dash zero zero one. Do we have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion, it's second, in discussion, hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And oppose, like sign. Hearing none, the bill has passed. Next, we have bill number twenty twenty-three dash thirty-three for a second reading, it's an ordinance to rezone six nineteen South Church Street identified as Florence County Tax Map Number nine zero one zero four dash zero two dash zero one nine from AC to NC dash six point three, do we have a motion?
A motion, second.
We have a motion, it's second, in discussion, hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And oppose, like sign, thank you. Next, we will move into our introduction of ordinance, the first bill is bill number twenty twenty-three dash thirty-four, and the staff has asked that that be deferred, so, that will be, if there's no objection, that will be deferred. Next, we have bill number twenty twenty-three dash thirty-five for a first reading, it's an ordinance to name the pocket park next to two eighteen North Darren Street as identified as portion, portion of Florence County Tax Map Number nine zero one seven zero dash zero four dash zero zero two.
Second.
We have a second, third, and so forth, and at this time, we're here from Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, this is an ordinance to name the public park adjacent to Thompson's Barber College and ideal funeral home, the Reverend William L. Thompson Pocket Park. However, this went to Planning Commission last month, September twelfth, and received the unanimous vote to approve the naming of the park, Reverend William Thompson founded the Barber School in the Indian area in nineteen eighty-nine, has been a long time of downtown business, we recently received grant monies to move forward with the improvements on ideal funeral property, provided a lease on that property along with the earl on the Barber College building, and we will move forward with this, this will be the name.
Do we have any questions at this time? What I would like to do is, I want to acknowledge the Thompson family at this time, would y'all please stand, I want the auditors, please come forward, I want the audience to see who Reverend Thompson family is, please come forward at this time. And I do want to acknowledge, this is just the first reading, and I'm, I'm gonna be confident, I believe that's gonna pass fully, and we are, go through a second reading next month, so what I want to do is give the family at this time the opportunity to make any statements in reference to this reading for this particular bill. Well, again, I'd like to thank y'all as always for our support, because I've been here since the beginning, with mom and pop, supporting the community, again, we just grateful, honored that y'all take my hat this much, also, happy to be back on. Thank you so much, we're into the family.
Because he gave back to us the points, so now we appreciate y'all giving back to him, and everybody's talking about him, they're all.
It's a beautiful meal, thank you, thank you, too, y'all have a good day, thank you, thank you, Will. So at this time, is there no further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And oppose, like sign, let reflect that this bill has passed first reading, thank you. Next, we have bill number twenty twenty-three dash thirty-six for a first reading, it's an ordinance to rezone a portion of two thousand Marsh Avenue identified as Florence County Tax Map Number nine zero zero four three dash zero two dash zero zero one from CA to NC fifteen, do we have a motion?
Don't move, second.
We have a motion, it's second, at this time, we're here from Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, this is an ordinance to rezone a portion of two thousand Marsh Avenue, it is currently zoned campus, and they're looking to rezone a portion of that, and as you can see here, is the location of the Presbyterian Church, and they are looking to subdivide a portion along Calvin Sarkle, here, where you can see my mouse moving, right there highlighted in the lighter yellow, this is to be proposed to be five single-family lots, on August eighth, it was initially brought to Planning Commission, and Planning Commission voted to defer the matter so that the church and some of the surrounding residents could have a conversation about, about the redevelopment of that property and what it would look like moving forward, the church and the residents were able to talk and address many of their concerns and solve that issue, and then on September twelfth, Planning Commission held the public hearing, it voted unanimously to move forward with that project, and you can see here, this is the proposed subdivision, it did subsequently receive sketch plan approval as well pending the adoption from city council, so, this is zoning that is, the proposed rezoning is similar to all the zoning adjacent to the property, it is simply just rezoning to the same standards of all the residential properties surrounding, and this concludes the session.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Neesmith Jackson.
So there is, they're just doing a little small part of it.
That's right, yes, ma'am.
And then the church is developing these lots.
Yes, ma'am, they're gonna subdivide it, and it's my understanding that they will sell it to residential home builders to build new single-family homes on it.
Okay, okay.
Chair recognizes Councilman Braddock.
Was there, I don't, I don't see anybody in here, I want to start a pop, but there was no pushback on the different sizing of the lots, the frontage, because the frontage is different than the current frontage, correct?
The proposed zoning will all be the same as the, the surrounding properties, so it meets the same standards that of all the single-family residential around it, they range from just meeting the, the standards of size and lot frontage to far exceeding, so it's, there's a wide breadth of, of sizes, but it meets the requirements of the zoning around it.
I just know we came into that issue before.
Yes, that's right.
And sidebar question, is campus zoning, is that the only zoning, zoning that doesn't have to be contiguous?
Yes, it's for institutional churches, schools, that type of thing.
Other questions? Hearing other questions, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And oppose, like sign, hearing none, the bill has passed first reading. Next, we have bill number twenty twenty-three dash thirty-seven for a first reading, it's an ordinance to amend chapter twelve of the city of Florence code, ordinance to provide for the creation and administration of a roundup program that would apply to a utilities customer's monthly bill.
So move.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, and a second, at this time, we're here from Mr. Rollins, and also.
Thank you, Mayor, this proposed roundup ordinance was sponsored by and recommended by Councilman McCall, what this does is it allows the city to round up the customer's utility bill to the nearest dollar, so the maximum amount that could be added to a bill would be ninety-nine cent, this money would be put into a separate account, which we would then partner with a third-party not-for-profit who would distribute the money, collect applications and distribute the money based on the criteria the city has set, and so, the last page of this, the criteria, first of all, there's gonna be a maximum of a hundred and fifty dollars per six-month period, you can only get assistance twice a year, and there's, you've got to be the, the water bill and the owner of the house has to be the same unless it's a rental agency, a rental agreement showing that you're a tenant, and there, yeah, there's a few other little requirements there, but it comes down to the conditions, could be residential accounts only, the, one of the, one of the special considerations for the vulnerable, an elderly individual aged sixty or older, disabled individuals, and they must prove, have proof of disability, children aged five and younger in the home, and then any household income who is currently, whose current income limit is a hundred and twenty percent of the area median income. This is an opt-out program, which means that we will apply it to all accounts, and that if the customer chooses, they can, in writing, request to opt out of the program, in which case their bills would not be rounded up.
All right, Chair first recognizes Councilman Braddock.
Well, opportunity to, to address this and some, some other things that came up in the prior speaker, but, one, we, I'm in full support, we are looking to mitigate, you know, some of the, some of the cost factors to our, our most vulnerable population through, through this program, and, and you can opt out, we do, we do want it to be successful, but, two, I have relationships with all the mayors in those areas that you, that you referenced, and all of them are struggling with infrastructure, their populations are going down, they don't have businesses, they don't have jobs for people, they can't build houses because they can't get grant funding for future development, only to meet, and there's certain towns up in Jefferson, Sheraw, Pageland, that are in a horrible situation in terms of being able to see what the future actually looks like, nobody wants to have to increase our water, our water bill, and nobody wants to have to invest four hundred and fifty million dollars, but we all want our children to have a, a place, you know, a community where they want to stay, and they want to raise their children, they, they want to get good water, and they want it to be clear when it comes out of the faucet, and, and they, and they want to, you know, make sure that, that they have a future, and that's what, that's what we're talking about with, with everything that we're doing, so, these aren't easy decisions, these are decisions that you, that you may take it on the chin now, but hopefully, it'll be decisions that five, ten, fifteen, twenty years from now, that you'll thank the people up here that have been willing to take the hit on the chin, because. um that have been willing to take the hit on the chin because it's going to be communities like Pamplico and, and uh, and Johnsonville and, and Pageland and Jefferson um that are going to wish that they had the opportunities that we in Florence have, the staff that we have, um, the uh, the forward thinking that we have that even got us in the position that we're in today to even be able to do this. Had it not been for Frank Willis and and leaders before, we wouldn't even be in this situation to be able to do this because other municipalities sold their water rights, you know, to, to private companies, and, and these are ones that are in a, in a horrible situation. So um, as, as unfortunate as it is, the, the, the price of admission, um, I'm for one willing to pay for it and, and, and I want to make sure that, that, that folks that, that have trouble transitioning are, are taken care of as well. And, and I think, you know, a, a few cents on the dollar, um, at, at most, the most that anyone in this room could, could give to this is less than twelve dollars for the whole year. So um, to make sure our seniors and houses with small children and our veterans and, and folks, you know, with low incomes are taken care of. Um, I appreciate Councilman McCall for bringing this to our attention and giving us an opportunity to do that.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Neesmith Jackson.
Um, I also would like to commend um Councilwoman McCall because this actually uh gives the community a way to participate in this roundup plan and contribute to making a meaningful and difference in the lives of people who can't. Um, there are a lot of people that are struggling to um make these water bills, and this will actually give them assistance. Um, those that are less fortunate and on, you know, not working right now, they can have an opportunity to get their bills paid by other customers, by other community members. So we're contributing to the lives of other community members, and if we want to do this, this is a great way to do it. This is a great way to help a senior who own a fixed income and is affected by the water rates. This is a great way to do that. And so I commend it, and I think it's a good way for us to continue um contributing to the members of our society.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman McCall.
Thank you. Uh, I apologize for my voice. Um, but one of the things I do want to say is regarding, you know, a, a lot of these municipalities, they sold their water uh systems, um, because one, they probably, they could not uh manage it, and two, they didn't want to take the heat from uh, from members in the community when they have to make that decision to invest in the utility. They don't want to take the heat from it. Um, so it's unfortunate. We, we do get the heat because we have to do what's right because this, we have to run a utility. Um, and it costs, and when you invest in it, in the, in the infrastructure and the utility, it costs unfortunately. Um, but I think we've kind of got together and we've uh come up with, came up with this program. This is not something new. Uh, there's utilities across the country that do the same exact roundup program. Um, one thing I would say is, is opt-out. Um, but as part of this, this we gives, excuse me, I'm stuttering. I'm sorry. Uh, but it, it's, you know, it doesn't take effect until six months. So um, the city plans to do like a marketing campaign um to make people aware of this roundup uh program that is going to take place, and we don't want it to be no surprise. I want to give everyone ample time to be able to opt out. Um, but I will hope that you will want to help the least of these in our community. Um, and again, I'm supportive of it because of that. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Smith.
Um, so Councilman McCall, I'm in full support as well. Um, I want to thank you for reaching out to other utilities and municipalities who have been successful um with this program. Uh, I think we think of the term helping neighbors, helping neighbors and helping our neighbors, excuse me. This is where we help our neighbors. Like Councilman Braddock said before, you're given upwards of max of twelve dollars to someone who may be in need. Um, and there's no way that I cannot support that. We are here in Florence, and we have always lived under the motto to help our neighbors. So this is going to help our neighbors who are, are in need. So again, I'm in full support, and um, I want to thank uh Councilman McCall and Councilman Braddock who's also on the Finance Committee. Uh, we're coming up with criteria, and it was a tough decision, but um I'm in full support of helping my neighbor in any way I can, um especially the elderly, uh who own fixed incomes, and those young mothers or mothers who have um those kids that are under five. Water is a necessity, not a need. We also need to remember that. It is something that we need to survive. So that, is that need for them, for that family, I'm in full support for it.
Any other questions or statements at this time? I'm making this pro temp.
I also want to join in and offer my support for this, and I think it speaks to us as who we are as Florence. It speaks to us that when we're the kind of community that looks out for each other, then that says something about who we are. And I'm proud of this council. I'm proud of the committee for coming forward with it, uh, because I do think it speaks volumes about who we are as a community, and so many of the organizations that come up here that we support, it's about us taking care of ourselves and taking care of our neighbors, as I said before. So I, I think it's a worthwhile, worthy uh approach to helping, let's provide some of the basic fundamental services uh in our community. So thank you.
Any other statements, questions?
Well, I guess I'll get a closing statement. I do want to first of all acknowledge that the program and its concept is a good concept, and I believe that it's role model after um Lake City, correct? Is it role model?
Yeah.
So it's um, it's actually role model after the Lake City um plan. My concern and statement is that what I expressed to council and also the chair for the Financial Committee, I believe that should be all about choice as well. And I say that in the sense that we are running this utility. So we are the ones who have the captivated ordinance of customers. I believe that we had to adjust the water rates in order to maintain the system that we have because we always have to have assistance prepared to serve in the future. My concern comes in is that when it comes to choice, when we go to a cash register and if they're doing something for organization, they ask you, do you want to round up to give the fund to organization? So as a city, for me, I believe that we should offer that same right, that when we do this program, we should allow the citizens to decide if they want to participate. I don't believe that we should blanketly mandate everyone comes in and then they have to do the right and try to get out of it. There are organizations right now, big conglomerates who are going through things where they place things on their customers, and now they're being, being sued. So I like the program, and I like that it will give opportunity for people to request funds. We support that part one hundred percent. But I do believe for all of our customers that we should allow them to make the choice whether or not they want to participate. So that is my concern, and I will always express that. The customer should have that right. They shouldn't, and if anyone who don't get to see or hear this, they're not even know that they're being rounded up to help someone. So for me and to all, if it's regardless of how it's voted, I do believe that our citizens should have that right to choose that they want to be a part. We should not blanketly cover and make all of our customers come in and tell them, well, you need to let us know you don't want to be in it. We support the theme, one hundred percent I do, but also support our customers and believe that they should have the right to choose whether or not they want to be a part of it. So that's my statement for it. Wonderful program, but my choice would be for the customers to decide that they want to be a part, not for us to decide that they're going to be a part. And at that, are you ready for the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, lack sign. Nay. Let it reflect that the bill has passed first reading of account of six four one against. So at this time, we will proceed to resolutions. The first resolution is resolution number twenty twenty-three dash forty-one, and this one will be discussed if no objection in executive sessions of resolution authorizing staff to negotiate a grant agreement with organizations in the amount as shown in exhibit eight in compliance with the Sycamore Line Opioid Recovery Act. Next resolution is resolution number twenty twenty-three dash forty-three, which will also be discussed in executive session. There's no um, uh, no opposition or question. The resolution and conditional grant development agreement to provide an incentive for the development of a new housing as a part of the ongoing neighborhood redevelopment, redevelopment project. Next, we have resolution number twenty twenty-three dash forty-four, a resolution to authorize a transfer of five hundred thousand dollars on American Rescue Plan Act funds to the general funds. Do we have a motion in second so we can hear from our city manager? So moved.
So moved. Second.
Okay, motion second. We can hear from our city manager at this time.
Uh, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Uh, just a uh, just sort of a, a recap here. This resolution is a follow-up from a resolution that was presented last month regarding the reallocation of a million dollars from ARPA, uh, funding to be used in other areas within the city. Last month, council took a, uh, took partial action, uh, was taken on the resolution, and the remainder of the resolution was referred to the Finance Committee for review and recommendation. And so that being said, I would yield to the Finance Committee.
Thank you. Uh, Randy, um, we have, uh, we met on, I'm not giving a report, on October fourth, uh, last Wednesday, and uh, the recommend, council did vote it for finance to study this issue. Um, and the recommendation was for uh, for the additional half a million dollars, two hundred thousand dollars for four additional police vehicles. Um, so that's including the other four. So that's a total uh, two hundred thousand dollars for rehab projects and one hundred thousand dollars for weatherization projects.
Is that amendment?
That's. So motion to amend the um, resolution two zero two three dash four four, um, to include two hundred thousand dollars for four additional police vehicles, two hundred thousand dollars for rehab projects, and one hundred thousand dollars for weatherization.
So moved.
Second. So we have the motion and a second for amending the resolution number twenty twenty-three dash forty-four to read for two hundred thousand dollars for four police vehicles, two hundred thousand dollars for rehab, and two hundred, and a hundred thousand for weatherization, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So that is the amendment. All those in favor of the amendment please um signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, lack sign. Any other discussion on the, on resolution as amended? I would ask that with city manager on with these numbers, are you comfortable with these numbers?
Yes, ma'am.
And so we're, with the two hundred thousand dollars, that would give four more vehicles, increasing the number of um police vehicles to eight, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so it's a reduction from the previous, but still brings us up to, all right. Any other discussion on?
Yeah, can I see what this is going, but I think that what the balance was, um, Madam Mayor, the balance was the, the committee wanted to um, look at the, the, the balance between public safety and community redevelopment. Um, I think, um, and there was other members of council as well. This was from the Community Development Committee as well as the Finance Committee. Both wanted to make sure that we um, our officers have the, what they need, but also to balance that with what the community needs as well. So um, yeah, so we made that decision based off of um, though, that's that balance in just the community and public safety. Thank you.
All right. Still have to clarify, Chair? Okay. Councilman Smith, did you want to speak?
No.
Councilman Braddock. Okay, Chair recognizes Councilman Braddock.
I, I do want to say as, as supportive as all of us are for the uh, for the police force and, and equipping them with everything that they need to be successful, it was, it was very surprising to find that we had seventy-three applications um for rehabilitation of homes and seventeen for weatherization. We're talking about a need of three point six million, and, and um, I've driven through neighborhoods and nothing is, is, as hopeless and disparaging as seeing every other house, um, dilapidated, grass grown up, you know, um, these are homes that, that people are getting pulled in to be raped, uh, that, that people are living in to do drugs, that they're hiding in, you know, after a shooting occurs. And so it, it is something that we have to balance. We, we definitely want to equip and make our police force as good as possible and as efficient and, and give them all the tools. But we do need to, on the other side, clean up the communities that they're working in so that we can inspire hope and revitalization in these communities where people don't, aren't in such a despairing position that they feel like they have to uh do different things in order uh to survive. So uh, I appreciate the, the balanced approach and uh, and appreciate the, the city um for everything that they do to make sure that we use our funds to, to support community and our law enforcement.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Barnes.
Yes, I, and at the last meeting, um, when I made the motion for us to revisit this, um, I, I looked at the fact that most of the monies that we have gotten since I've been on council for three years have been, it has come from monies like this that we've channeled towards our communities. And so our, I, I, my effort is community. I am all about community, and so I am about public safety in the community, but we have got to branch out from this great thing that we've done downtown and branch out and expand into our communities. We've got to make all of Florence great, and um, this is an effort to um further that, and so I am in definitely support of what the finance has suggested.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Neesmith Jackson.
Yes, um, definitely. We want to focus on the pressing needs of our communities. I receive many calls on seniors not being able to maintain their homes because they're on a fixed income. Um, we have a great neighborhood revitalization, stabilization plan. Unfortunately, we, we don't always have the monies to contribute to that plan. So anytime we get extra monies in, I would, that's all I wanted to do is to make sure it goes to the pressing needs of our communities, um, to ensure they have a better quality of life, and we always want to be proactive in our communities and making sure that we keep them up to par and again, bring hope to these communities, uh, that has been neglected for so long. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Smith.
Um, first, I want to thank um the Community Development Committee for giving us a recommendation and actually studying um what our community really needs and send it to the Finance Committee. Uh, again, I'm going to harp on probably what everybody else is saying. We feel the need that our police officers need um equipment to protect us, but as well, we feel the need for the beautifications of our city that surround our beautiful downtown. And I think I'm in, I mean, I'm, I'm in full support of any beautifications that we can do through any community that we can and through the applicants that we do have. We hear you, and we are trying to raise the money to support you in every way that we can. Uh, so again, we, we have more money available, and, and we pray that, you know, you submit your applications in, complete them, so you can receive the money to help um your homes and your property.
Chair recognizes pro temp.
I just want to segue for a second and say, you know, we, for our um citizens who are watching and listening, we have these uh city council committees, and sometimes it, it's maybe a little difficult for people to understand how these committees work and exactly what they're doing to further the business of the city. But I think this is a great example of how the committees have worked so well together with staff and in a concerted way, um, by having this matter initially considered under the chair of Councilwoman Barnes for the uh Community Committee, and then them to consider it, and then send that matter over to the Finance Committee under the chair of uh Councilman McCall, and then having them work together and work with staff, and then have this recommendation come forward that is with, that, that is a comprehensive look. And I think it's a great testimony to the dedication of the council members, and I thank you all for your dedication and for looking at this matter so uh intently and, and uh the work that you've done on this, and I commend each of you for your efforts uh to try to come up with something that's a wise uh and just uh resolution to further our city and move us uh in, in a positive direction. So thank you all, to each of you for that.
Any other discussion on the amendments as amended? Thank you to our city manager and our city leadership for working with the committees to come up with numbers that will be acceptable. So we have amendment on with a second. All those in favor of the amendment as proposed with the two hundred thousand dollars for the four vehicles, two hundred thousand. for the rehabilitation, and $100,000 for the reorganization. If there's no discussion, all is for the amendment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed like sign. Therefore, Resolution number 2023 is now a resolution that will authorize the $500,000 transfer from the Rescue Plan Act to the general funds as outlined. So now that we have that amendment, we need to vote on that amendment. All is in favor of the, of resolution as amended, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Let it reflect that Resolution number 2023-44 has passed unanimously. Next, we have Resolution number 2022-45, a resolution, recognition of the accomplishment of Mr. Oscar James. Do we have a motion in a second?
So moved.
We have a motion in a second. All is favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Please state some, I know we went through that quickly. Was there a representative here, Representative? So he's here? Yeah, I'm going to ask her, I see you there, Oscar. So at this time, I would ask that Mr. Davis, please come forth, read the resolution, and then after that, Councilwoman Barnes, you're welcome to present it to Mr. James.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Resolution number 2023-45, a resolution of recognition for the accomplishments of Oscar James. Whereas Oscar James is widely known and respected in Florence, South Carolina, and is a graduate of South Florence High School, and whereas eager to enter the professional world, Oscar earned his diploma and obtained his cosmetology license simultaneously, and whereas after graduating, Oscar worked at several salons in Florence before moving to New York City to pursue his dream, and whereas once in New York City, Oscar worked at some of the finest salons, began placing himself in settings that would showcase his style and ability, and whereas Oscar's talent soon caught the eye of other industry professionals, and he was recommended to work for his longtime favorite Vanessa Williams. It was then that he began to transition from salon work to work in full-time with celebrities, and whereas Oscar's impressive client list includes Tyra Banks, Iman, and Jennifer Hudson. His work has graced the covers of multiple magazines such as Vogue, Elle, Essence, Cosmopolitan, Vanity Fair, and InStyle Magazine, and he was the 37th Annual Daytime Entertainment Emmy Award winner for Outstanding Achievement in Hairstyling for the Tyra Show. And whereas, having never forgotten his roots, Oscar invested his hard-earned money to open Oscar James Salon and Spa in Florence. While the salon has since closed its doors, this investment in Florence spurred the Downtown Revitalization Initiative and paved the way for future economic development opportunities. And whereas Oscar's dream of revitalized Florence has come to fruition, and his investment in the Florence community will continue to resonate for many years to come. Now therefore, be it resolved, the City Council of the City of Florence does hereby recognize Oscar James for his tremendous professional accomplishments and for his contributions to the revitalization of his hometown, Florence, South Carolina, resolved this ninth day of October 2023, approved as deformed. Ben Ziegler, City Attorney, Casey Moore, Municipal Clerk, Teresa Myers Irving, Mayor.
Thank you. At this time, we will ask Mr. James and a representative he desire to bring forth. And Mr. James, after you receive your resolution, you're welcome to come forth to give some words, and thank you for all that you're doing.
I wanted to ask George, John George was, actually the director of the Downtown Revitalization.
It's a privilege, I'll do that.
Well, I wanted to honor your contribution because I know it came from your heart. I, I know it was never about what you would get, but what you would give, and I just think that it is just so, the least, the least that we could do is to say thank you. The least we could say. We, I'm going to let you talk in a minute. I wanted to hurry because I don't know when Oscar, Oscar's working the set of, the Ecos of.
Go, go, go.
No, they're on site, so I don't know when they're going to come, but the staff that used to work at the salon, some of them showed up. Could y'all stand up, please? And then, of course, I've got to mention Oscar's mom. Oscar's mom has re, has relocated here in Florence. She is a Mother Emanuel survivor, so some of you have probably seen her on TV. She's now living here in Florence, and we'd like to welcome her to Florence.
Thank you for this. I'm really overwhelmed. When I wanted, when I started, you know, the salon, it was really about giving back and to see what the city has done since has been really heartwarming, and to think that I was a part of that, just a small part of it, means the world to me. Thank you very much.
Chair recognizes Pro Tem.
Don't run away so fast. So, y'all need to understand that when everybody was saying downtown would never turn around, downtown was going nowhere, why are y'all wasting y'all's time on all that downtown stuff? And Ben, you remember it just as well as anybody. And I was with Peaches, and I was the Chair of the Downtown Development Corporation at that time, and we were fighting against these headwinds. The phone rings, and there's this person who says, we want, I, I want to invest in a building on West Evans Street in downtown Florence, and it was Oscar. I'm like, are you sure you want to do this? Because you have, in any movement, you have, you know, a, a current that moves forward, and on that current, you have the cutting edge, but then you have the leading edge, and then you had where Oscar James was. He was at the very, very front of the whole effort, and those of us who were there in the trenches every day understand the effort, the passion, the financial commitment that was made, but it was the love of community, and that's the thing that I will always treasure, is your love of this community, and what you did, and I don't know if you realize this, what you did is pave the way for others behind you to come forward and say, wait a minute, maybe we can invest in downtown, and if you look at all these privately owned downtown businesses now, someone had to be the first, and that was you. And I just want to say from personally, how much I appreciate your confidence commitment, because if it wasn't for that, I really don't believe we would have achieved the kind of success we did as quickly as we did without that. So thank you so much.
Wait, wait, wait.
I'm really overwhelmed. Sorry?
Hold up one, Mr. James. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Neesmith Jackson.
And it's so funny that George talked about you being the first, because one of the things I was going to say was that you are a trailblazer, and you set the standards for what our downtown should look like, because your building was one of the most beautiful, you know, shops, and, and you did a great investment, and we thank you. I don't think Florence was quite ready, and I think it was a way hell of our time, just like you are, but hopefully sometime in the near future, that can come back and, and you can really stay here, just like your mom, and, and really get rooted here, okay?
This is my home, and will always be my home, so I'll be here.
Yes, thank you so much for everything.
Chair recognizes Councilman Smith. Mr. James, please stay, tell you.
I'm sorry?
Please stay there.
Okay.
Oscar, thank you for your vision and taking the leap of faith on your community. Like everyone up here said, you were the trailblazer to start what is now our beautiful downtown, and I'm just here to simply say thank you for setting the footsteps and the groundstones for our future businesses that are here, and thank you for always keeping Florence with you wherever you may be, because we know you travel the world. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Barnes.
Just one last thing. I just wanted to just reiterate how special this place was. Oscar put in, in detail, it took us three years to get this project up and running, and, and two years before it got up and running, I had to go and travel and train with him, but like the floors, there were floating floors, Venetian shower, everything was just detailed because he said, I want the people of Florence to just have a little bit of what I experience out there in the world, and he sacrificed so that we could actually experience that, and I just, I just didn't want that to go, it was just not a salon. It was detailed to give us a worldview of what's going on, so thank you so much.
Chair recognizes.
I won't say nothing else.
I have one other comment, and, and Peaches, you'll remember this, the grand opening of it, y'all remember the grand opening? It was a black tie event. I mean, it was a who's, who's list, and it was, I mean, it was something, it was kicking. And it was, it, it was a, just kind of a little snapshot, a little vision of what was to come for our community, and so you brought an elegance, a flair, and a, and really that vision of what it can be, and hopefully we have met your expectations in what it has become.
Yes, you have. When I rode through Florence Friday night, I was overwhelmed, just, it reminded me of when I was a child, like we had movie theaters, we had war, we had Kidos, you know, and so it feels good to just, I see the place so alive again. Thank you.
Now, saying to you, first of all, thank you for coming back home to, even just to be a part of this today. We appreciate all that you have done and your family being here from Florence. I believe that we raise a lot of wonderful people, and they go out into the world, but it's an honor when you come back home. So we thank you, but also I want to just give you a compliment on the things you're doing with your career, to continue to grow into your family. I know that they're proud of you, and I know the West Florence area is special, our area is very proud of you too. So just thank you again for what you've done, and even though downtown developed in different segments, I believe now your, your shot would be a star piece, so if you decide that you're going to come home and open another location, you're welcome at any time.
Thank you.
So once again, thank you, but most of all, congratulations on all the things you're accomplishing, we're proud of you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
At this time, we will move forward with Resolution number 2023-46, it's a resolution of recognition for the East Side Story. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
So we have motions in second. At this time, that all is in favor, I'm going to ask, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Let it reflect that Resolution number 2023-46, a resolution to recognition of the East Side Story passed unanimously. I'm going to ask that Deputy City Manager, please come forth and read it.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Resolution number 2023-46, a resolution of recognition for the contributions of East Side Story and the community. Whereas East Side Story was founded by Shermine Sumter and co-founders Joe Cummings and Chastity Backus, with a vision to create a world where every individual, regardless of their background, has the opportunity to thrive in a just and equitable society. And whereas, established in 2021, East Side Story's mission is to tirelessly, tirelessly champion the causes of social justice, equality, and community empowerment. And whereas, standing firmly on a bedrock of values that define who they are and how they engage with their community and the world, East Side Story embraces inclusivity, empathy, integrity, and a resolute commitment to nonviolence. And whereas, East Side Story works tirelessly for the community, offering over $5,000 in scholarships, organizing a community women's empowerment march, and collaborating with local leaders on ways to better assist the community. And whereas, since its inception, East Side Story has become well-respected within the community as they work towards positive, sustainable change. Now therefore, be it resolved, the City Council of the City of Florence does hereby recognize East Side Story for their many contributions towards the betterment of the City of Florence, and looks forward to their continued examples of dedication to the community. Resolved this ninth day of October 2023, approved as deformed. Benjamin Ziegler, City Attorney, Casey Moore, Municipal Clerk, Teresa Myers Irving, Mayor.
Do you have representatives for the East Side Story here? Please come forward, and at this time, I ask that Councilman Smith, please make the presentation.
Thank you for all of you and your, your community, bringing quality to East Florence. Powerful thing. You've invested so much, given to the community, women, given to our community, and thank you for having a vision for the East Side. Wish you so much success, and we will have, thank you for your involvement.
If you're welcome, if you want to state anything about your organization, you're welcome to take this time to do so.
Well, the East Side Story was created just for me to be able to give back to my community. I wasn't living here at the time, I actually spoke with a mayor when I was coming back and forth, and I just wanted it to be black and white, nice, you know, a little different, and to be able to help. We started off, first of all, $300, I mean, because we do it out of our pocket, we do, we get some donations, but a lot of footwork for the community, and this year just looking to do, you know, a little bit more, bigger and better, and expand it some more, and maybe get our scholarships up some more to be able to give, and we offer it to anybody in the community of Florence, it's not just for East Florence. If you, you know, if you know someone, it's going to be in September next year, God willing. I don't have a date yet, but I most definitely will get the word out a little better for anyone that never heard of it.
Before you leave, too?
Let me tell you how great this lady is right here. I don't mind speaking. She came up with this idea, she hit me up. First of all, my name is Joe Cummings, I grew up right here in Florence, right now I live in, in Virginia, but I, I'm considered the guy that got out of the neighborhood and did something with his life. I got a recording studio, I got a barber shop, life is really good, I'm retired from the military, and I even went back and bought the house that I grew up in, in Florence. She called me, we're good friends, even though she went to Wilson and I'm South Florence, we still grew up in the same community and we have the same vision. She called me and said, we need to do something to make sure we can give back to these kids. We need to figure out a way that we could bring everybody together and have something really nice and formal, so people, you know, they're not used to being in a situation where they got to put on a suit and tie and stand up and look like a grown man. So we had to reach back out and say, hey, let's come together, let's, let's build a scholarship fund, let's all put something in it and make sure that we're able to show the young folks that we're going to be successful, we're going to stand up and we're going to look like mature men and women out here, we're not going to do the same things that plagued us in the past. And when she came to me with that passion, there was nothing, nothing left for me to do but say, let's go. And the thing about it is, we build a platform that got 1,500 people just from our community that are able to post, to put out whatever concerns about, right on that page. We can really reach everybody in our neighborhood with the simple message right now, and that means a lot. That's a lot of power. So we take that platform and we'll post a job, the things that are happening in the community, what can we do to help, and people are interacting with what we got going on. This organization is, is not small. We, the first year that we did the black and white, we do a black and white party every year, which was alluded to, every September. We, like she said, we don't have the exact date for next year, but it's going to be in September. We brought out Harry Carson. He came and he, because he's from the same neighborhood, right, in East Florence, thus the name East Florence, East Side Story. But anyway, we bring all these people out and it's growing bigger and bigger, we're on the third anniversary, and we just had a gala that was just off the chain. It was really, really nice. We had these young folks come in, and all the elders, elders in the community, they love what we're doing because they see that there's some kind of change, that something is happening. We're actually catching on, we got people that have, we haven't seen in years, coming together from out of town, yo, let's come, that's the neighborhood, wow, we doing this. So it's growing and growing and growing. This year was just amazing. My hat's off to you, Shermine, for coming to me, you know what I was going to do, and we just want to thank everybody for acknowledging what we're trying to have in the future, and I really appreciate you guys.
And I want to state, I simply want to state to you, thank you for what you're doing, because I do. Because I do remember when we were in conversation and you was in the process of trying to transition back here. And so I just simply want to say thank you for staying steady in pursuing this and making it happen. And I'll say credit go to you because when you spoke with me, you could tell that your heart was in it. And now the fruits of your labor, labor is now coming forth. So we thank you not only for planting that seed, but also for Mr. Cummings being there with you also you can water it so it can continue to grow. Because it's not until all the parts of our city is working together and being strong that the whole of the city of Florence will be strong. So thank you for helping to make that happen. Thank you. At this time, we will proceed with report to council. First, we'll have appointments to boards and commission.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. We have three boards or commissions that have a vacancy or expired term. Our first board is our design review board. Membership application requires a commercial general contractor that's licensed in the state of South Carolina. Councilwoman Neesmith Jackson is to make this appointment. Seeking reappointment is Cal Gunter. He is a commercial general contractor. There are no other applicants.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Neesmith Jackson.
I would like to defer at this time.
Next, we have our public safety citizens review board. We have one vacancy. Must be 21 years old and a resident of the City of Florence. We have one applicant, Mia Turner. This falls to Mayor Urban.
I wish to defer at this time.
Finally, we have our aesthetics advisory committee. Members must be employed within the city limits. We have Maureen Finger as an applicant. We have Councilwoman Neesmith Jackson.
I would like to appoint Ms. Maureen Finger at this time to the aesthetics advisory committee.
We have a motion from Councilwoman to appoint Ms. Maureen Finger. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion. It's second. End of discussion. Here knows, here no discussion. All is in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. And opposed, like sign. Please let the record reflect that Ms. Finger has been appointed.
Mayor, that concludes our report.
Thank you so much. At this time, we will proceed to our next item is Parks and Beautification Commission. Here to report to the council, do we have Mr. Walter Salinger here? Thank you, Mr. Please come forward. And we'll give them a few minutes, Mr. Salinger, to, thank you. Thank y'all for coming.
I'm Walter Salinger, Chairman of the Parks and Beautification Commission. Have a few other members today. Yeah, Colonel Wingard here and Carl, would you stand? Are there any other members of the commission here? Thank you. Mrs. Mayor, members of council and city staff, on behalf of the Parks and Beautification Commission, I would like to thank you for the opportunity to come before you and report on the commission's endeavor since our last report in 2019. Once again, the Recreation Services Sports Tourism Department has seen tremendous growth from both the programming and facilities standpoint. Parks and Recreation Services are often cited as one of the most important factors in surveys of how livable communities are. Parks provide gathering places for families and social groups as well as for individuals for all ages and economic status, regardless of their ability to pay for access. The communications survey that was completed indicated the community would like more on recreation, athletics, or city event information. 50.11% said that we look forward to seeing all the things that this community has longed for finally come to fruition. I'd like to now address some of the achievements and advancements made since our last report. Last December, Arbor Day was celebrated at Dr. Iola Jones Community Center. This year Arbor Day will be celebrated on December 1st with the tree planting at the Florence Sports Complex. I hope you'll all be able to come. In addition, the City of Florence was recognized by the Arbor Day Foundation as a Tree City USA for the 43rd consecutive year. In our parks, the $15 million project we received, we're able to replace most of our playgrounds with new equipment. This has been a great benefit for the committee, for the community. Investing in more playground equipment encourages children to engage in physical activity, helping their gross motor skills and benefiting their overall physical health. When children play on playground equipment, they learn the joys of being active and the value of taking breaks. We're hopeful that we'll get to see through the renovations to Levy Park. We are asking if all funds do not fully come through, that we keep the already secured funds for the Levy Park area. Trails, the extension of the rail trail to the soccer complex is moving forward. This is, I think, the final part of the $15 million project, thanks to the collaboration of the landowners. Creating a place like that, an amenity, is very challenging and takes a lot of collaboration with different groups and stakeholders. And we hope that we can create safe paths for cyclists and pedestrians throughout the community. And we encourage collaboration to continue, to identify areas where paths can be added throughout the city. Programming, the after-school and teen programs continue to provide fun, engaging opportunities at Levy Park, Maple Park, Northwest Park, Dr. Iola Jones Park, and Barn Street Activity Centers. With the $15 million funds, we were able to build the Dr. Iola Jones Park Community Center and Maple Park Community Center. We've been able to offer programs and activities to each of these facilities to continue to improve the quality of life for our residents. The $15 million funds were able to tackle deferred maintenance, but we will need to keep in mind that we will need continued money allocated for the upkeep of our parks, trails, and facilities. We'll be back. We have been offering after-school programs to over 120 children as well as intercession camps to over 180 children. We have been providing a safe environment for adults 50 and older to participate in fitness classes, arts and crafts, and day trips to over 350 adults for only $12 a year. In athletics, I'm going to give you numbers during some of this. I hate giving numbers, but these are important. The athletics department continues to strive to offer quality programs and experiences for youth and adults within the Florence community. Year to date, we have had 2,781 athletes compete in recreation sports that included baseball, basketball, football, soccer, volleyball, cheerleading, softball, track, cross-country, and gymnastics. Four years ago, we began a scholarship program to assist families for registration expense. We are excited to report we have given 36 scholarships this year totaling $1,647.50. We continue to offer programs for adults to compete and continue their athletic career. Through this year, we have offered adult basketball, began a spring adult volleyball program, partnered with an outside group to offer adult soccer in the spring and fall, offer fall and spring softball as well as kickball during the summer. In sports tourism, the City of Florence continues to make its mark in the sports tourism industry. With the opening of the Florence Sports Complex this past spring, we have been able to expand the events that can be brought in. During the time period from July to June 30th, 2023, the last fiscal year, the department hosted 51 events which brought in approximately 50,000 visitors to the Florence community with an estimated economic impact of $9.5 million. The future of sports tourism looks very bright and new events are being added with the biggest event being in 2025, when we'll host the NJCAA Division One National Championship for Men's Tennis. I said I was going to give you some numbers. Those numbers show we serve an amazing amount of children in Florence, adults, and we're having a great economic impact on the city with the visitors we bring in. And the amenities like the trails that have been created, those are place building amenities. They're not easy to do. Your success in trying to get the grant for Levy Park shows what is possible with collaboration. I want to work that we can, to make sure we can communicate and collaborate to find opportunities to expand the place building, creation of amenities that will be attractive for people to come to Florence. I want to turn the program over to the Veterans Park Chair, Barry Wingard, which is one of the most successful amenities and attractions that's ever been added to Florence.
Colonel Wingard.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here, Madam Mayor and council members. Been a long time, a lot of new faces since I was here. I don't think I've been here since pre-COVID. But anyway, just to recap the last several years, the park has had its Veterans Day ceremony every year. I'm going to touch on a couple of other things, but we've also had weddings. We've had memorial services, retirement ceremonies, promotion ceremonies. It's, it's more active than you might think. But just beginning last, within the last year, let's say November 10th, we planted two trees from the World War I Battlefield, Bellewood in France. These seedlings were, or the acorns were harvested and brought to the status of seedlings at NC State University. And we are among a few places that have these trees. Quantico, the Marine Base, Patriots Point, and the University of South Carolina, and Reynolds Coliseum in Raleigh. So we're ahead of the curve on that one. It's, it's a nice addition to the park and hopefully these trees will grow there beside the World War I monument. The World War II monument was dedicated on November 11th of last year. And if you have not seen it, it probably got more comments than anything we've done in a while. It is truly spectacular. It is in contention for some international awards that we should hear pretty soon. By the way, we have five monuments that have already won six international awards, one, one, two. Something else we've added since this time last year is we are part of the National Blue Star Museum Trail. All 50 states have museums for the most part, that have been part of this website. If you're traveling, you go and, and we're on there now with several other places in South Carolina. And the Gold Star Monument that was installed in 2020 also has a national website which we are part of. And there are Gold Star Monuments in 31 states. There are two in South Carolina, one here and one at Patriots Point. In 2011, going back to the 10th anniversary of 9/11, we had a pretty big ceremony again on the 20th. And since then, we've kind of developed a pattern of having a small ceremony every 9/11 and a couple of our council members joined us this year and I appreciate that. In conjunction with that, there's the Survivor Tree. There's a tree, a month after 9/11 at the Twin Towers, there's a tree still living. A group up there started a Survivor Tree Foundation and has nurtured that tree. And they give three communities each year a seedling to plant. And I applied for this shortly after, and it's based on a tragedy in your community. And I applied for this a few years ago after the Officer Carrington and the other officers were shot. The foundation kind of went dormant during COVID and didn't do anything. So I kind of changed the dates and sent the same email back to them and we were selected. Now, when I say three a year, these trees are in places like the Ukraine, Paris, after the terrorist attacks there, Christ Church, New Zealand, after a big hospital or gun massacre killing. And there is one in South Carolina. And I was going to bring it up with the lady. It was just after the tragic shootings at the church in Charleston. The intent is to plant this seedling in the vicinity of our 9/11 monument, which would give us, we have the stone from the Pentagon and this would give us a tree from the Twin Towers. Also, and this is kind of ongoing, I reached through an intermediary to enter somebody I know that knows somebody about getting SCE TV to come do one of their little 30-minute segments about our Veterans Park. And I really got a surprise and I'm not sure what to do with it. The SCE TV Making It Grow Program has indicated they want to do something. Now that's a program. I looked at some of their old shows about gardens and, and planting corn and all this stuff. So I'm not sure how we fit in, but hey, you know, coverage is good, I guess. Anyway. The last thing I want to mention is the U.S. Department of Veterans Affairs has a National Veterans Day Committee where they cite Veteran Day ceremonies in various communities. And we have been selected for that for this year. Now, they're running a little late because I've already got most of the planning done for this year. So we'll see what they come up with to help us. But subject to your questions, that's where your hand. It is still on TripAdvisor, the number one thing to do in Florence. Has been for about seven, eight years now. So questions?
Chair recognizes.
So first off, Barry, thanks to you and to Walter for all y'all's work on behalf of the committee, the Parks Commission. We really, really appreciate, all of us really appreciate all that you do. And Veterans Park is just, again, for anybody who has not been out there in a while, please make a point, go out there. It will just take your breath away.
I, I gave all of you a copy of this year's ceremony. That's something a local civic organization wanted to announce it. And I just sent that to them with the details. November 11th at 11 o'clock on a Saturday this year, and I'm not sure how that will, what impact that will have on attendance, but we're going to dedicate a monument to the Army Air Corps. It'll be the same scale as, along with memories back there. And it'll be on a three and a half foot pedestal, so it'll be about 10 feet tall altogether. It will depict a lone pilot gazing toward the sky, looking for the North Star, which was a beacon that pilots used to find their way home after, after a mission.
And I would certainly encourage all of our, everybody to, to attend that. I believe that monument is Alex Palkovich's work, our friend who's.
I talked to Alex Saturday, you know, he's in Israel right now, so.
He's in repairs.
Okay.
But beyond that, you mentioned Walter about Levy Park. And Councilman Smith and I had the pleasure to go and to make a presentation to the Parks Commission. Thank you for having us there. And we are certainly keeping our fingers and toes crossed and hopeful that the grant will come through and we should know something by January, hopefully, with that. But that would be an exciting opportunity to do some significant improvement in the east part of town and really for all of Florence as it's available to us. But the one other thing I wanted to mention is you talk about people coming in from out of town. Well, I had the pleasure to go out to the soccer complex this past weekend. I had a great nephew who was playing on the Florence team and his team played a team from Columbia that had another great nephew who was on that team from Columbia and they were going at it over there. But it was unbelievable. There must have been a thousand cars out there. I mean, it was overwhelming. 47 teams, as I understand it, from all over coming in, coming in on Friday and they were here Saturday and Sunday. So that's just a great example of the economic impact and what showcase the soccer complex is, as well as these other facilities. So thank you all for your work. Thank you for all you do. And we are really, we got some really cool stuff that we should be really proud of.
Thank you. Were there any other questions for us?
I simply want to say thank you to all, to you and all the board members for all that you do. And before you leave, I do want to reiterate to our public that the Veteran Day Ceremony will be held this year at 401 Woody Jones Boulevard, which will be Saturday, November 11th at 11 o'clock AM. And that is kindly open to the public to please come out and also not only in remembrance, but to support the events that we have. And I want to thank you all for all that you're doing and we truly appreciate it. You're all doing an excellent job.
Okay. Mayor, finish with one thing. Want to thank you all for appointing our members and allowing us to give our input and taking that seriously. And especially for the work you've done in hiring and retaining our great staff. And especially for the work you've done in hiring and retaining our great staff. I don't think the public has any way of knowing how hard it is to recruit and retain people and what it means to have great staff doing things. None of this would ever happen if it wasn't for the commitment of the people who you hire and retain. Thank you so much and thank you for taking the work seriously of making Florence a better place.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it. And that, this time, it concludes our report. The council will proceed with our agenda. Next on our agenda is the mayor's report. I will make my report brief today because we have so many wonderful things going on. What I would like to do is continue to encourage our citizens to go to thecityofflorence.com website, but also to social media so you can stay abreast of what's occurring in the city. We do have always, I want you to look at our committees to apply for that and acknowledging, just as we did Veteran Day when that's coming up, to keep that on your calendar. But also just to remind you that October's not only breast cancer awareness month, but on October the 3rd, the Sheriff Department did bring together law enforcement to recognize Hero Day. And I'm sure that you probably remember that we lost two officers in the Vintage Place massacre, Officer Caraway and also Officer Turner, along with other officers who was injured. But October will forever be ingrained into our hearts and minds. So we want to always remember those officers who was involved in that shooting, but also especially the ones whose lives were lost. And I will encourage all of our citizens as well to be alert on the things that we're doing here. I'm sure the committee chair is going to give a report, but you can drive through Florence as stated and see the various projects that we're working on. And please take a look at that. Those things are being done because of the day to the operation of our city manager, as well as our city staff who drives these things for us 24/7. I also would like to acknowledge that with the Florence Center, that you're going to see some changes that are occurring there. There's some internal updates and remodeling that's taking place and you can see some displays on the inside. And if you've not been there, there is a Hall of Fame area at the Florence Center and I'll encourage you to go there as well. I had the honor of re-touring that this week. And in January, they will be hosting the Hall of Fame banquet at the Florence Center. So keep your attention for those dates as well. We have some updates that's coming up on our 76th corridor, which is a joint commission of between city, county, Francis Marion and several organizations. And literally, there's actually a meeting that's taking place at 3 o'clock, which is going to be online. I won't be able to attend that, but I've already received information. Know that we're moving forward with the 76th corridor from Francis Marion already into the outskirts of the city. The overlay district for the city is in the hands still of one of the committees who are reviewing that overlay for that area. But know that we're working with the county at this time to develop zoning for that 76th corridor. So those are some of the major highlights I did want to bring to your attention. To, most importantly, stay abreast of what's taking place on your city. Go to thecityofflorence.com and to our staff and also to our committee who's making sure a lot of things are being placed there so the city, you know, can stay aware of what's going on. So that's a brief report. And I just want to reiterate, just remember Hero Days and remember where we're at with the loss of lives with the officers that we had and also for those who was injured. And this, also know that this case has not been proceeded through the court yet at this time, but please keep all involved in prayer. That concludes my mayor's report. And at this time, we will move forward to our committee reports. First, we'll have a report from the chair of the Business Development Committee.
Thank you. The Business Development Committee met on September the 21st and we had, members of committee were there and we encountered a update on several things. And one of the things that we talked about was in-depth, was an update on the third penny with regard to where we were on the roads and the improvements on the roads. That was, as you all really remember, the, we had the first penny sales tax, that was a seven years, and then the second penny sales tax, and now the third penny sales tax. We got $40 million to the city that we were able to utilize to help do road improvements in the city because the City of Florence does not have any dedicated funding that we get to be able to do roadwork. We don't have a gasoline tax we can use. We don't have a vehicle registration fee. So it's the utilization of this $40 million that we're able to do improvements on city-owned roads. And again, remember, most of the roads inside the City of Florence are owned by the state of South Carolina, not by the City of Florence. So with that preface, I'll call on our, first of all, Clint Moore to come and give us an update, please.
Chair recognizes Mr. Clint Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, this is, I wanted to provide a quick update on the penny sales tax, essentially where it started and where we currently are. So the referendum passed back in November of 2020. I believe the county, the bonds were issued May of '21, so late, early, early summer, late spring. We had, we then hired two engineering consultants in June of '21 to start analysis of all the roads and take a full assessment of the roads that we have in our system to begin the improvements. On, on the referendum, it was, again, a $40 million budget. There were 150-plus corridors, roadways that we had on the list, along with four intersections. And since that time, we've been able to resurface approximately 32 roadways in the, in the last probably 16 months. So we've had a lot of work to do as far as the impacts of COVID and the cost increases that we have seen since the, the initial referendum back in, in November. But we are moving forward very quickly. I do have a, an image that I'd like to pull up and hit on, the, the roadways that we have in our system. So on, on the map, you can see the hot, the roads that are highlighted in red are those roadways that we have under our responsibility to operate and maintain. It accounts for approximately 37% of all the roadways in the city. The remaining vast majority being state roads. So obviously, that's a big hurdle to accomplish and penny sales tax has proven to be a good mechanism to accomplish that. So we do have, what we wanted to do is have an equitable approach in the order in which we resurface these roadways. And so we created a scoring matrix that looked at the pavement condition, the potential pedestrian demand, if it's within our revitalization areas, if they have drainage issues, if it's close to our transit routes or our trails. And then we, we applied that matrix to help generate our, our, essentially our, our list and approach to resurfacing. So right now, we have a number of bids out to start new roadways for resurfacing and we plan to resurface and enhance approximately 40 corridors over the next 12 to 16 months as well. So that's currently where we are with the penny sales tax.
Would you do us a favor and email that image to all the council members? I think that's something that we would all appreciate having. Thank you. And thank you for that report. And so beyond that, we did have update on the water and city utility projects, where we were with that, as well as the stormwater utility projects and downtown development, other development projects. One of the interesting things that has occurred that was the urban square area where that development is taking place, under the urging of our city attorney, Ben Ziegler, and we thank you for, for bringing it to our attention, that, that was a site of a very important historical location of the Gamble Hotel. And so a archaeological survey was done. I don't know if you have a two-minute or one-minute just snippet you want to share with council, what took place, Ben?
I'm like, Ben, please keep the one or two minutes. Please.
Thank you.
No, thank you, Mayor. Members of council, yes. Last three weeks, an archaeological team has been excavating in the corner of Coit and Brody Streets. You've probably seen them, funding from the city, the county and the Florence County Museum. Very grateful for that, under the auspices of the Archaeological Institute PD. The site is Gamble's Hotel, which was built in the late 1850s. It was really the first major building built in Florence. It was the center of life in Florence from the 1850s to the early 1890s. There was a skirmish fought there during the Civil War. Probably the first town council meeting was held in that building in the 1870s. A lot of the first churches in Florence met there. Very important. The archaeologists did a great job, were able to uncover a lot of interesting things about the building, sort of get their hands around what the building looked like, what the footprint was. Thousands and thousands of artifacts that tell the story of how people were living back in that time. So that'll all be processed or a report will be written and that material will be in Florence. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. And thank you for taking the initiative to encourage that to happen. And that's, unless other members have anything else?
I have a question.
Yeah.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Neese Jackson.
Now, back to your report on the order resurfacing, Clint. You said the pavement pedestrian revitalization, how, which one scores first in their top?
Pavement condition is certainly top of the list just because of, obviously, the, that's first and foremost what the, this is intended to improve. And then the pedestrian demand revitalization areas, those are all 20, 15% with the pavement conditions being 40, the majority of that. Also did want to bring up that, that we do have a capital improvements portion page on our website available for folks to look in. There is an interactive feature and it covers our penny sales tax, some of our stormwater work and various other capital improvements as well.
Any other questions for the chairs for the, thank you, Mr. Moore, for that report.
That's, that's all. Thank you.
All right. At this time, we have a report from the Community Development Committee Chair.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Our committee met Wednesday, September the 27th. Councilman Cheques McCall and Councilwoman Lashandra Neesmith and myself were present. On that day, Ms. Annie Brown came. She was the new community service manager. She gave a report also. We were informed that Michelle Morgan would be hired and start, started today, started today as the director, executive director for the Florence Neighborhoods Corporation. So we're excited about that. The updates that she gave us, there were several homes that are almost to completion in, in, all over our city, in East Florence and, and North Florence and, and West Florence. I won't name them all. There is a lot of work going on. There's beautification with partnering with Taylor Garden to the Wood Mountain Sumter Street and Pine Street for beautification, weatherization. And there's still a Phase 6 waiting for title review from our attorney for demos on Pine Street, Kershaw Street, Frazier Street, Gladstone Street, Stackley Street and Lynch Street. And so we are moving forward and I thank the committee for all that we've done. We did come out and in that report, our minutes, it shows that we made, we asked the Budget Committee to look at increased street lighting, crime prevention resources such as cameras and surveillance, funding, funding for weatherization and rehab and community cleanup. Committee, do, did I leave anything else out?
Thank you, Madam Chair, for the, for the committee for that report. Commissioner recognizes Pro Tim.
With regard to community, did want to remind the committee that we do have the Pecan Festival coming up and that is all about community.
Yes.
And so November the 4th, and I don't know if you want to say anything about that, but that is right around the corner and we won't have another council meeting until after that. So if you want to mention anything about, let's go nuts, as we all will be doing on Saturday, November 4th.
Just what he said.
Thank you for that report. And also I do want to acknowledge while we own community in relation with Senator Mike Rickenbach, there will also be efforts to do a cleanup with Panetta Pride in the Levi Park area. But I do want to acknowledge that Senator Rickenbach was a key part, partner in getting that to happen. Next, we'll have a report from our Marketing and Public Relations Committee Chair.
All right. So we didn't have, we couldn't meet last month unfortunately because I sprained my foot, everybody. So I, I had to kind of be on bedrest, so I couldn't meet today. It's my first day actually wearing heels and I don't even know why I did that. But just so you know, City Bot was awarded the contract and so we're excited about that. We're in the development stages. So we're expecting a launch date for City Bot to be late January 1st of February. So please look out for that. We're excited about that. City U graduation will take place next month here in our city council meeting. So we're definitely excited about the new people that went through the City U organization to learn more about the city. Now, we'd like to kind of talk about giving credit to where credit is due. This past weekend, we had the Wilson High School alumni and I would like to recognize them for and appreciate the hard work and the dedication of the alumni, the president, Mark Bailey, our very own Councilman McCall, Casey Rose, all of them that, who worked tirelessly behind the scenes to make it a success. And I'm gonna tell you, it was a success because y'all hear I lost my voice, right, celebrating. But the week-long celebration becomes a beacon of unity, pride and opportunity for all members. And it goes beyond the traditional notions of a school gathering. I mean, we had golf tournaments, block party concerts, down to the inaugural Walter English Bike Ride. And I would love to, to really thank the City of Florence Police Department for escorting them down there. Thank you, thank you, thank you. But we have to acknowledge and we cannot deny the undeniable impact that these events have on our local economy, from the influx of visitors far and wide, staying at our hotels, filling up our hotels because multiple hotels had, were filled and, and were sold out, restaurants was bustling at, with activities. We had every promoter, local promoter in Florence, that, that all the venues were booked and, and everybody made money, which was really a testament to the success of these events. So again, just wanted to acknowledge the homecoming and, and let everybody know the event truly is a testament to the power of collaboration, dedication, coordination, participation, cooperation, unification, consideration, and the huge impact that it truly has on our beloved city. So I, I can't think of another event that really brings this much people to our city and I just want to acknowledge that Wilson High Alumni and the homecoming was a huge success this past weekend. And I want to make it known to acknowledge all of those that involved.
Thank you for that report. At this time, we have a report from the Chair for the Financial Audit and Budget Committee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My voice is also gone. And I wanted Councilman Smith to get his report because I've been rambling with my words, my voice is not of the part. But nonetheless, we met on October 4th to go over regarding our finance meeting. Kevin Ross, he shared the monthly financial report for August with the committee and we looked over the budget and the expenditure items. We also finalized the roundup program and it was a great discussion amongst all of us that was involved. And it was, I think every council member definitely had an input on the, on the roundup program throughout, throughout us trying to get it finally to vote today. I want to give credit to Councilman Brad, he came up with the name of the program. Make sure our list, let that be known as the CARE Program, Coins Add Relief Every Day. He took that very seriously. I want to, he took that very seriously. In addition, we went over the, the ARPA funds and again, we made that, we made, we took consideration, city staff's recommendation, as well as the community redevelopment recommendations. And as stated earlier, you know, we made that balancing test between-
And as stated earlier, you know, we made that balancing test between community, just community redevelopment and as well as public safety. One last thing I did forget that will happen regarding the Roundup program is the staff indicated that they will be sending out a letter to all utility customers regarding the information about the Roundup program. And again, it will not take effect until six months after the second reading, which is next month. So I think that is May, yeah, so May, it'll go in effect in, I guess, the first day of May of 2024. And that will conclude the report. If I missed anything? And that will conclude the report for the Finance Committee.
Thank you for that report. At this time, we are prepared to go into our executive session, and item for executive session is A, discussion of matters related to a contractual matter, 30-4-78-2. Then item B, discussion of a matter related to proposed economic development project And then C, a personnel matter, 30-4-78-1. Do we have a motion?
Come on.
Do we have a motion second in the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We consider ourselves in the executive session at which time, you know, votes or action were taken. So we will proceed back to our agenda. And our first item that we had on our agenda was discussion of a matter related to a contractual matter, 30-4-78-2. And that item, goes back to, if you go back to your, your agenda, you look at for that particular one, that's a resolution authorizing staff to negotiate grants with organizations in the mind of showing Exhibit A in compliance with the opioid recovery act. Do we have a motion?
But, Madam Mayor, before we start, I had to recuse myself on this matter, because my wife is a board member of one of the agencies that applied for the money.
Thank you, Councilman, for making that, that announcement. We appreciate it. So at this time, we will proceed. Is there a motion?
Yes, and I would like to amend the motion to give resurrection, restoration. As a city council, we feel like it's crucial, really, for allocating these opioid funds to addressing the multifaceted challenges that the opioid crisis presents on our community. So again, with that being said, we decided to give, we allocated resurrection, restoration 125,000, Five Sparrows Organization 172,000, and Circle Park with 55,860.
That is the motion for that particular item as read. Do we have point of information? Was it 125 or 105?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. One, $105,000. I'm so sorry. Not 125, 105. 105 for resurrection, restoration, Five Sparrows 172, and Circle Park with 55,860. And so that, hopefully can spread that out to address those opioid crisis needs within our community. Thank you, Councilman Moore.
All right. So 105,000 for resurrection ministry, 172,000 for the Tenacious Great Founders, Five Sparrows. And then we have 55,860 for Circle Park. That is the amendment to the motion.
That is the amendment to the motion.
I'll take that.
You took it to me? All right. So that's our main motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion to second in the discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And a opposed like sign. Hearing none, let it reflect that that has passed with a unanimous support. Next item we have was a matter related to a proposed economic project, and that particular resolution was Resolution Number 2023-43. It was a resolution and conditional grant in development agreement to provide an incentive for the development of a new housing as a part of the ongoing neighborhood redevelopment project. Do we have a motion?
So moved. Second it.
We have a motion to second in discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And a opposed like sign. Thank you. Unless we had a personnel matter, which requires no action at this time. So at this time, we're entertaining a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Motion second in the discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Stand adjourned.